We face the difficulties of today and tomorrow. I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. This nation will rise up, live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident.
Hello and welcome to episode 22 of the Policy Dialogue Series with alumni, staff, faculty, and students from the University of Maryland School of Public Policy. The views expressed do not represent official positions of the school or alumni network. Our goal is to discuss specific policy solutions that can address and solve the current local, national, and international challenges we face. We are recording this on April 16th, 2021. My name is Evan Pap. I graduated with the class of 2011 with a focus on international security and economic policy, and I'm the executive producer of Empathy Media Lab, which publishes content on labor, political economy, art, and culture. Joining me is fellow alum Raymond Nevo, who is running for Maryland's Prince George's County Council District 2 seat. Raymond is an advocate who uses his experience and policy expertise to enact equitable and just policies for residents in Maryland and Pennsylvania. He's running to represent District 2 and very excited for you joining today. How are you doing?
I'm doing great. Thank you for having me. Thank you for that intro also.
Well, I'm really excited to hear about your campaign and how others can learn about what it's like to run and potentially get involved. So I'd like to begin by discussing your background and why you wanted to run for county council.
Sure. So, you know, for those who know me, you know, they know I was raised by my grandmother and we, you know, lived a story that's not unique, but you know, we grew up poor. We grew up in subsidized housing. As I got older, that housing deteriorated. It became, you know, less energy efficient, leaky roofs and windows, poorly insulated. And we suffered a lot of health disparities because of that, among many other things. And, you know, growing up, I always thought like, I'll move out and I try to build something better for myself. And, you know, once I got out of the house, that, that wasn't immediately true. And I found myself homeless for a period of time, you know, in early adulthood. And, and as terrible as that experience was, it really was nothing compared to watching my grandmother years later be wrongfully evicted from her home, the place I grew up, where she lived for 42 years and spent a year homeless, you know? And me trying to use any resource or knowledge or connection that I had to, you know, advocate for her, to keep her safe, to ensure that she was still able to access her healthcare, to ensure that she still had, you know, some money that she could eat, you know, have warm clothes through the winter. And that in itself was incredibly painful to watch and be a part of. And it is what really pushed and inspired me to, you know, become an advocate for others because I, I learned, you know, simultaneously this, you know, during my time at Maryland, that this was happening all over the place. There are several grandmas out there who experienced what she did and it is painful and devastating and wrong. And, you know, through networking and just, you know, asking the right questions and talking to those who already worked in the field, I got a job with the National Housing Trust, hired on as a state policy and equity advocate. And my job was to advocate for low-income families who are often disproportionately people of color, advocate so that they can access affordable, energy-efficient, healthy, sustainable housing. And, you know, spending this time this year as an advocate, building up really strong cases for why certain decisions should be made and then presenting them to decision-makers and having those same people, you know, listen and then turn around and make the opposite decision, which has so often been more harmful to those in the most need. And it's, it is the culmination of all of that that has really pushed me to, you know, not just be an advocate, but also now be a decision-maker.
And why do people and politicians change their views on something like housing? Is it generally due to lobbying? Is it the deeper pockets of developers and private equity firms coming to buy up depressed assets? Why, why do so many politicians come out with these idealistic proposals only to change when they're actually in power?
I think, I mean, you basically nailed it. I think what happens, and I, I'm not a politician, you know, I'm not an elected official, but money talks, money makes things move, and money stops things. And, you know, if a official is really thinking about their next move, they're, you know, trying to fundraise, they don't want to upset their, their funders. And, you know, and I think that along with this sort of unexplainable fear of, you know, challenging the status quo and calling for something different, even if it's unpopular, all of that has really created the system, I think, that we experience today.
So could you talk about your policy platform and some of the key issues that you'd like to address?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, really, my platform is under the umbrella of a COVID recovery and I'm not just recovering from COVID, but building something new and different that will ensure that when the next COVID comes, because it will, that the problems and the, you know, disparities that we have seen are not exacerbated the way that they happen. And for me, you know, housing is the, my number one issue. I feel like without healthy, affordable, sustainable housing, it is really, it's impossible to like have a foundation to, to do other things, you know? And so ensuring that people are able to access the housing that they need and are not displaced from the housing that they currently have is really at the, at the forefront. And, and I'm really proud to work for NHT, who is actually doing that here in Hyattsville currently. You know, also on part of the platform is accessible healthcare. And we've seen with COVID that a lot of people of color have a lot of distrust about, they've had distrust about, you know, information related to the virus and, you know, is it actually deadly and who's telling the truth? And, you know, is mask wearing helpful to like, a lot of distrust in the vaccine? And, you know, I've heard a lot of people of color, people in my family who are, been very hesitant about, you know, the science behind it. And I think a lot of that, a lot of those reservations are valid. And I think it's because there are not accessible healthcare facilities in the neighborhoods with the most need that are also staffed by people who are known and trusted in, in those communities. And I think being able to create that system would not just help with recovery, but help make us a healthier, more vibrant community as a whole. And of course, education, which, you know, we have seen, you know, we call it the achievement gap, which is a term that I, I don't like, but I haven't thought of a new term yet. But it is widened significantly because of COVID. And, you know, as, as our recovery begins, that gap is not going to, it's not going to contrast the way as quickly as, you know, we see the unemployment rate drop or, you know, cases drop. And, and a lot of that is because in, in this area specifically, you know, the current facilities are dilapidated and overcrowded. And, and even for students who are able to go to school, you know, it's really difficult to learn in those types of environments. And so we need to ensure that we are creating, we are updating current facilities and creating new ones. And also ensuring that students have the resources at home that they need. You know, the amount of families without a computer, let alone access to internet, is really just, it's sad and pathetic and it should not be the case in 2021. And so creating that infrastructure to ensure that students are able to, you know, thrive in, in their school and in their endeavors. And, you know, there, I could continue to go on, you know, police, police reform, of course, energy justice, environmental justice. And, and also just increasing civic engagement are also all pieces of, of the platform.
Well, make sure to put your website on the, in the show notes so that people can take a closer look of your different policy stances. And I want to bring on your campaign manager, Hugo Cantu. Hugo, are you on? Excellent. Nice to see you. How are things going so far on the campaign?
Things are going well. Things are going well. I'm really happy to be here. Thanks Evan for having us. Things are going well. Things are moving forward. It's been an interesting ride, to say the least, from the moment that Raymond and I started to talk about this to when we started to pull a team together, which was, you know, came with relative ease because of the support that Raymond had from the, from the jump. So people were willing to jump on and then stay and be involved. And, you know, now, now we're here, about to go into the summer. So it's, it's going to be exciting and it's going to, it's going to definitely just keep going and we're just keep climbing.
And could you introduce yourself too? Because you also are another part of the School of Public Policy as well.
Yes, I am. So my name's Hugo Cantu. I graduated last May, so it has almost been 12 months since I got my degree in undergrad. I did some time at community college and then I eventually joined University of Maryland and joined School of Public Policy, wearing my Kappa Omega Alpha shirt. It was a professional fraternity that some friends and I started over there for public policy to kind of get, you know, people together and incubate ideas and get some, some people to interact with others that, you know, want to see the world be a better place. So that was something that I did at School of Public Policy. And I met Raymond, who also ran for an SGA senate seat to represent the School of Public Policy, you know? And so our voices could be at the table. So it's nice to kind of bring it full circle a little bit in a situation I never thought I'd be in, never thought I'd be running a campaign post a recession, being here in this position now in 2021, going through the second recession. Since, you know, 2008, the housing crisis took a lot of homes and my family was no exception. You know, we lost our home, we had to move around a little bit. And, you know, being in a position now that's both tragic, since we're dealing with the, you know, recovery of COVID, but also, you know, empowering in a lot of ways of seeing someone like Raymond, seeing something and putting someone that, you know, has lived the life that Raymond has and telling people in the community, this is someone you can believe in, this is somebody who's got really good ideas, and this is someone who can work with everyone in the room and not be afraid of saying the things that need to be said. And, and it's, it's very, it's, you know, I'm very honored to be here and very honored to be a part of Raymond's story.
So many people talk about politics and very few people are willing to put skin in the game. So it takes great courage and I do applaud both of you for, you know, being willing to go into the arena because public policy is directly connected to politics. It's directly connected to getting a political mandate to be able to implement that policy. And it's ultimately based on power. And so for those who've never ran for elected office or worked on a campaign, can you talk about the process you've been going through from the conceptualizing to eventually going across the line to say, yes, I'm going to do this and to registering and where you're at now? A little bit of the anatomy of the campaign?
Sure, I'll, I'll go ahead and start because I think, you know, there is so much that goes into just the decision to say, I want to run. And, and for me, that was no exception, probably to a really far extent, you know, thinking about why, what, what impact do I believe I can have? And do I think that me as a decision-maker would be more harmful or less harmful? And, you know, also the considerations of my own family, you know? I, I have a partner and, you know, what does that mean for him? And in terms of the, not just the time it's going to be campaigning, but then, you know, you win, you have to actually do the job. And so, once I thought about why, you know, Hugo was there throughout all of that. And then, you know, the conversations began of, okay, well, what are the steps? Well, what should we look for? And there was a lot of research that we did, just the two of us, without talking really to anyone, just to look at voting patterns, look at, you know, money raised, because that is a huge part of elections, looking at, you know, the, the platforms of the current elected officials, not just in the seat I'm running for, but all over the state. And look at the candidates who ran against them, who, you know, were not successful. What were those campaigns like? Looking at, you know, okay, what kind of team will we need? Okay, do we know these people? You know, do, do we see ourselves being able to fundraise? And do we see ourselves having the capacity to do all the door knocking and voter contact? And, you know, once I was in a place to say yes, because Hugo, I think, was, was, you know, feeling yes before I was. And, but, you know, once we got there, then Hugo can probably talk a little bit more about what, what that actually meant in action.
Yeah, so in action, you know, following all the research, you know, looking at, you know, fundraising, who's fundraising, how much they're fundraising, where are they running, looking at precinct data, how many people are voting in different areas, you know, information that's all public, you know, thankfully, and as it should be. And then, you know, the details, you know, you start getting into what is it that your state requires you to do before you can do something? So, you know, for us in the state of Maryland, you have to say that you want to run for office. You don't have to say where you're running for office, you just have to say that you will. And that requires you to have a couple of people on the team first. You all sign off and say, yes, this is something I want to do, this, these are the rules that I will abide by. And then, you know, you can't raise any money until the state says, all right, you're allowed to do this. And, you know, you have to go get a bank account in the name of the campaign, right? You can't start accepting money and putting it to your personal account. So that, that, those are rules that you have to abide by and everyone has that publicly. And you can just reach out to your board of elections and say, hey, what are the rules to starting a campaign? And they'll be very helpful in that. And, you know, I, yes, I was a little bit more like yes before Raymond was, I think, because I know the advocate that he is. And it's, you know, very important to me that, that he was able to do this.
What are some of the key operational and logistical issues you need to organize and successfully manage a campaign? You've already gone over a few of them, but yeah, what are some of the tried and tested?
Well, you know, this may not be on, on paper, but you, you need a committed team who is going to be available, who's willing to, you know, meet weekly, who is okay to being held, you know, accountable for their deliverables. Because without the team, it's really difficult to do any of the actual logistical pieces, which are, you know, which is, as Hugo was saying, like establishing the bank account, which, you know, he and our treasurer also, treasurer, you know, Tom Jones, also School of Public Policy alum, ran into, you know, jumped a lot of hoops just to get that done. And a lot of unforeseen, you know, steps. And from, and then us actually filing with the board of elections, which also, you know, due to COVID, has become a little bit harder. And there's a lot of tiny little steps that you have to take in a certain order. And if you don't, you know, you delay yourself, you know, getting, you know, the voter activation network and, you know, it is costly. There are, is a really fine established process for, for doing that. And, and then also, you know, not just thinking about your fundraising and where it's coming from, but also how you're tracking it, ensuring you're getting all of the correct information from all of your donors, that they are eligible to actually donate to you. And, and then also considering how you're spending the money, you know, are you accounting for it correctly? Is this actually legal? And, you know, we've asked ourselves for something as minor as like, you know, a, you know, two-color copies that cost like $2. Like, are we spending this money correctly? Are we going to be able to track it in the right way? And-
It's scary too, because a lot of people can get in trouble and you're there to really try to do some good. And there's just one T that wasn't crossed and you can get fined, you can go to prison even. So it, it's real for people who don't know. So yeah, that's, that's a huge added problem or challenge, I guess, that, that you have to face. Hugo, you got anything else you want to add?
Yeah, no, you know, unfortunately Prince George's County is not, you know, has not been exempt from having sitting officials, you know, mess up or, you know, make poor decisions that resulted in a fine or imprisonment. So, you know, just in our county alone, you know, these things happen. You know, on a logistical scale, managing, you know, the, the dynamic COVID-19 protocols and then making sure, you know, you're doing what you need to do when you do your in-person events, they're organized correctly, you know? It's, it's ever-changing. We, you know, with the vaccine rollout and people becoming a little bit, you know, more lenient on what you can do and where you can go, you know, managing that. You got to manage, as a campaign manager, you know, you want to be very clear on what you're telling the candidate, because a candidate's got to, you know, deal with his thing or her thing or their thing. So that's something that you want to be very aware of and not, you know, telling them everything that's going on, because there's some things that, you know, they got to know at the moment, there's some things you can catch them up on later. And, you know, one of the other things is, you know, making sure the projects that you have are all showcasing the person that you're, that you're managing, right? The story that Raymond has, the person that he is, the reason our team was able to merge very well together. Everyone is here to support Raymond, support the person that he is, support the story that he has. All of that has to be managed in a way where you have to remember, these are volunteers. A lot of them are here because they believe in Raymond. And, you know, they're there and without them, you know, I, you know, what do I, what can I do? It's, I can't do it all. So every day you got to remember, these people are volunteers, they're interns, they're, they're there for you and they're there for the candidate. They're not there, you know, for, for the money or whatever comes with it. So that's something that's very important to keep in mind and something that, you know, I even talk to my dad about sometimes. He's been a project manager for a very long time. And it's like, you know, remember that, you know, you're, you're nothing without the people that are working with you. And you got to keep that in mind. And, you know, that's something that sticks with me and I'm very grateful to Raymond, I'm very grateful to you Evan, even allowing us to have this platform, you know, being very grateful for every, to everybody and their roles. And that's something that's, you know, something that I, that I, that I do quite enjoy managing all of that. You know, and I very strongly believe in Raymond. So that is why we're here, that is why we're all here.
Awesome. Thanks Hugo. I just have a few more questions for Raymond, so if you need to drop off, thanks so much for your time.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks Hugo.
So Raymond, do you want to talk a little bit about your time with the University of Maryland School of Public Policy? And how has that experience influenced you in this journey?
You know, when I, when I think about the School of Public Policy, in, in a lot of ways, I feel like they were supporting me to take on this endeavor before I even knew that I wanted to do it. You know, from, from my time at the university, I have said, you know, I got a lot out of the university, but, but, you know, as, as I go through this process and I talk to more of, you know, my old professors and, you know, the other staff, you know, the message that they have given me is, you know, we, we didn't give you this, like we helped you see it within yourself and you had it. And we helped you pull it out. And so, you know, since telling them, you know, that we are going to launch this campaign, it's a lot of excitement, a lot of congratulations, a lot of offered support in various capacities. You know, the school definitely has a line that they, they have to ensure that they don't cross when it comes to elections and candidates. But they have been sharing the fact that we are running and, you know, and it's been great because it also shows, you know, current students and even maybe former students of, you know, just, you know, another avenue of what you can do with your policy degree and the importance of networking at school. And, you know, what it looks like to actually like, you know, look at something scary in the face and, and approach it. And so we've been really grateful for that, that support, you know, as, as individuals in the School of Public Policy. They have also been supportive in ways that they can be, you know, just as ordinary citizens outside of the school. And, you know, we have all been very humbled and grateful for that initial support and in the continued, you know, building of support that we're getting.
Yeah, and I'm always inspired by my fellow alum, alumni and different faculty and staff and students. And there's obviously a huge repository of knowledge on policy that you can always like tap into. And, and obviously, like you said, there is no official endorsement. This is always on an individual level with people working outside of their time to celebrate the fact that someone who graduated from the school is using their policy education to actually- someone who graduated from the school is using their policy education to actually put it into action, into a political campaign. So there's a couple more questions left. And, um, first one is how can people get involved with your campaign?
Thank you, uh, for, for asking that question. Um, so there are a number of ways. First, you know, go to raymondovo.com and, um, you can like and follow our Facebook and Instagram. Um, you can get in contact with us through, um, those channels. If, if you'd like, you can also join our listserv, which is, um, also right there on the website to get updates. We will be soon, um, publishing some events and it'll be kind of our, our first big volunteer events um, coming up next month. And so we're really excited to, uh, push those out. They'll be on, you know, all of our social media platforms and through the website. So people can sign up, volunteer with us, you know, we'll be looking for obviously on the ground volunteers. But additionally, you know, volunteers to help with social media, as well as volunteers to get involved directly with our platform and, um, and really help us, uh, shape it and, um, talk to our constituents to in- incorporate their needs as, as we move forward. So, um, raymondovo.com, follow us on social media.
Awesome. So in closing, what do you want to tell potential voters?
Um, so that's, that's a really great question, because there, there's a lot, um, that, that I, I would love to share. And there's a lot that I think, um, you know, voters, depending on where you live, even in this district, um, are, are looking for different things. But, you know, what I can say, um, you know, wholeheartedly is that, um, if, if we are going to be able to, um, address all of the disparities that have been exacerbated by COVID-19, then we are gonna need real systemic change in, um, all functions of, um, government and, uh, programs and, and just how we operate as a society. And that means, you know, we are going to have to look at solutions that we never looked at before. And, you know, that may seem uncomfortable and scary to a lot of people, but that's what we've been doing this past year. You know, we have all been forced to do, you know, take the non-traditional path and adapt in order to, uh, just survive. And, you know, we're doing it now. Some of us barely. And, you know, every day that we wake up, you know, we can say, okay, we did that yesterday. Um, but, you know, now we have a chance to take that energy that we have applied to helping us survive and really look at ways for us to now thrive. And, um, you know, I, I, like I said before, I'm, I'm not a politician. Um, I am an advocate. And, you know, I'm, you know, I am untraditional. And, you know, I, I think looking at all of our potential options is, um, really what we're gonna have to do to move forward. You know, I feel like, uh, you know, anyone that knows me knows that I am ready to take on this role. And they know that because they've seen me be an advocate for years now. They know that if I have the ability to help anyone, that I'm going to do it. Because, you know, all it takes is one misstep, one, one missed bill payment, one missed day of school or work, you know, one missed dose of medication to really bring a whole person's world down. And I, I know that from experience and it's really painful and people are still experiencing that. And so, um, you know, in, in this new role, I'm gonna do anything and everything I can to, um, help us and ensure that we stay encouraged and galvanized and loud, um, as we advocate for, uh, you know, more resources, um, and, and equitable and just society. And so over the next year, I'm going to be out there in your neighborhood, um, knocking on your door, you know, please say hello, uh, let's talk. You know, I think if we're gonna build something new, um, we as leaders are gonna have to do a lot of listening. And, you know, leaders do a lot of talking right now. And it's time for us to listen. And that's exactly what I intend to do. So follow us on social media, um, go to the website and let's do this together.